Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our Bible study this evening. Again, it's such a blessed privilege and pleasure to come into the house one more time. We know that Brother Sean and Brother Carol are on their way. We have a good idea that Deacon Pettis is probably gonna mosey on in here shortly. They told me that traffic is bad and you know, problem is, because I'm here at the church all the time, I've forgotten what traffic looks like out there. And so, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna trust and pray that God would get them here safely so they can join us for Bible study. Amen. Last week, we concluded our prayer 1-on-1 Bible study. We finished that Bible study out, amen. Tonight, what we're gonna do for evening Bible study, we're gonna begin our lesson on Genesis, the book of Genesis. We're gonna go to the beginning of the book and we're going to, uh, beginning of the Bible. And we're gonna just start moving forward through the Bible, trusting God, believing God, to believing God and actually move forward. He's going to do whatever it is he needs to do to teach us what it is we need to learn about faith, about Him, about Christ. And we're just gonna see what does, does His Lord. We may end up going through the, completely through the Bible. We may do a couple of books and God may shift us in this direction. We're just gonna be faithful to God and see what God has. As usual, we're gonna begin with our Q&amp;A session. If there are any questions or anything, we'll begin with that. And then after we finish our Q&amp;A session, we'll move right into our lesson for this evening. But before we do that, let's begin with a word of prayer. Dear Father God, Creator of the heavens and the earth, God, we come to you right now. Thank you, God, and praising you, God, for such an awesome day. That today, God, Brother Rodney and I and Sister Hattie, we really worked to get these boxes of food prepared and ready to go for Saturday's free food giveaway. And God, we're praying that God, with these boxes of food, that God, you are going to send families that are standing in the need, standing in the need of receiving food, standing in the need of needing to eat. And God, we're gonna trust and believe that you're gonna bring them here so that, God, we may be a blessing to them and that, God, we may bless you, that we may love on you by loving on them, that we may, God, be the people that you called us to be, be the body of Christ. Now, Father God, we need your Holy Spirit to rest rule and abide in this place. We need you, God, to show up and show out. We need you, God, to literally share with us your wisdom, your will, your way. So that, God, when we go out here, we may be the best disciples, be the best doors, be the best service, be the best Christians that we can be for you. Bless those, God, who are here, bless those who are on their way, bless those who wanted to be here but could not be here. And most importantly, God, bless those that you're sending our way. The God, you're gonna plant them here and use them for the building of your kingdom, God, and for the spreading of your word. Father God, we love you, we thank you, we honor you, and your sons mighty, magical, marvelous, magnificent. We do pray. Amen. Amen. Praise God. Amen. Let's open up with our Q&amp;A session. Do we have any, any, uh, questions or about anything we've read, received, heard, talked about, studied? Do we have any, any questions that we want to address? Okay, go ahead, bro.
During our noonday Bible study, you were talking about the two segment. I wasn't really...
Following what that was?
Yeah, I wasn't, I mean, I, no, I didn't understand it though.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to shed some light on that.
Okay. Uh, the, what we mean by the noonday, well, the two, in Genesis, there are a couple of creation stories, alright? There is the, uh, there is the Genesis 1 creation story written by the priestly group of writers. These are the ones, this is the presentation of God sitting high, looking low, sits in heaven, sees that there's, there's nothing but his spirit hovering over of nothingness, formlessness, chaos, disorder. And then he starts speaking order into existence. He starts speaking existence into order. And he says, "Let there be light," and there was light first day. So, "Let there be two light." One to rule the, the day, one to rule, the, the, a lesser light to rule the night. "Let there be two masses in the, in heaven and earth separated from the waters, from the waters let animals and, and, like, team on the land," and so they come on the land. And so, that's the first one. Two, what you heard, Sister Hattie, she's talking about the second creation story, where we had the one where God creates Adam and Eve specifically. Now, in the first creation story in Genesis 1:26 through 27, God creates everybody. He said, "Let us create them male and female in our image." Male and female, He created them, alright? But in Genesis 2, God creates two people. First Adam, then Eve. And we, we were talking about how Genesis 2 is really not about the creation of man. Genesis 2 is about the fall of man. This is a story that deals specifically with the depravity of man, the entering and the explanation for the reason of evil and sin in the world and how it came about. In fact, this second creation story really shouldn't be viewed as truly as God speaking about creation, because he deals with creation in sort, in the very beginning, he leaves it alone. The rest of the, this story is understood as a story of man's fall, man's depravity, man's sin. Why is man so sinful? Why is, why are we so, why are we separate, separate, separated and distant from God? That's Genesis 2. There's a third creation story, is Noah. When God tells Noah to build an ark and he wiping out everything, that's a creation story. He's starting over. Uh, he's, he's starting over with Noah. Noah's not, and Noah becomes a progenitor of a new group of people, alright? So, when you heard her say two, she's speaking of this second creation story. She's speaking of, she's talking about what God did with Adam, Eve, and the serpent.
I have another thought for them. In the third creation story, would Noah be considered an descendant of, uh, well, not descendant, but, uh, an offspring of Abel?
Honestly, the origins of the Noah story are not Israelite in nature. Israel borrows this story from its Mesopotamian neighbors. And they, they change the name, they do not change the stories or the facts around, around the story. I don't know if we should necessarily say that Noah is Abel's offspring. Because when I think about, when we go to the genealogy, you know, the genealogy, I, I heard it. The genealogy of, of, uh, Matthew in Luke where they do the genealogy of Jesus. I, you, 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 I don't know, I don't remember either one of them including Noah in the story. And that's not, it's not, that's not that Noah wasn't part of it. Hello, come on in, come on in.
Can you come in? Are we too late?
Yeah, nah, nah, nah. Nah, nah, you're alright, you're alright, come on in.
No, we are going back home, that's how we roll, you know.
Come, come on in, you know, you know, I, I had to fight to save you some seats, you know.
I'm sure, yeah, yeah. Had to send the other folks home, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I did, because I said, you know, they have to have their seats. Hey, come on in, how are you?
And since, uh, since we're here, we said, well, let, let, let's bring somebody with us.
Amen, praise God.
I just wanna make sure that that's what, is it gonna be recording?
Yeah, yeah, we could, we, we, we put our, we put our stuff on, on Facebook.
Can I, can I be in a spot?
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can, yes, you can.
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can. Why don't you sit, one of the, one of the, pass it right here. Because that way, you won't be seen, but it's okay. Now, now, hi.
I'm Nancy Denver.
Nice to meet you.
I am his sister-in-law.
Amen, praise God.
And the wife of Carol's...
Brother, okay. Amen, come on in. Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. You come in, you've been on TV before.
Yeah, come on, come on in.
Come on in, man. Okay, alright, alright, why don't you come sit right here? That way, you're not really seen out. As you're talking, we can hear you though. So, you don't mind us hearing you talk, do you? Okay, amen.
They'll know I'm not from here.
She says, she says, she don't mind being heard, we're just not seen. I'm so happy to see you here, but, oh, there's my girl.
Yes, she is.
Amen, praise God, praise God. In fact, we were, we, we are, we had just begun and we were taking, we begin our Bible studies every week with a Q&amp;A session. So, if there's any questions that you have about anything that you've been reading in the Bible, you've wrestled with, you've been discussing, you know, let's say Sean's been keeping you up at night and you come visit, talking about the Bible, and you're like, well, I don't know Sean's right. You're gonna ask me.
Thanks a lot.
Amen, praise God, he's my buddy. You can ask him and if it's best my ability, I'll answer. If I don't know it, I get the, the information and make sure it gets to you. We all, I also give everyone chances, you know, typically when a preacher preach on something, you can't put your hand up and say, "Hey, where did you get that from?" And so, if there is anyone that has a question for something, this is the time to ask. And, and so, we do that, we go through that, and sometimes it goes all a Bible study, other times it'll go for ten, fifteen minutes. And then from there, once we finish, we'll go into our lesson tonight. Because in fact, we're gonna start our study on the book of Genesis. So, I'm gonna give you some background information about Genesis, so.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I told you who I was.
Yes.
But you didn't tell me the name.
Oh, I'm sorry to tell you that. I'm Pastor Al. My name is, I go by Pastor Al. My name is Reverend Dr. Tolly Aiken III. I know, that's a lot, that's, that's a mouthful, that's why I say...
And I'm a special ed teacher, so you're gonna have to break it down.
Okay, amen, amen, amen. I'm the senior pastor. I, I go, to make it easy and to really bring us closer together as leader and people, I go by Pastor Al, okay?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. I was elected to be the pastor of this church in November of last year, and I started January 1st. And so, we are, as people and pastors, moving forward, amen. And so, we do our Bible studies. We have it both for 12 noon and 7 o'clock in the evening. So, we have a noon Bible study and the evening Bible study. And I am, what else can I say? I'm from here in Charlotte. I didn't know I could get away. And when everyone else was leaving, going for another city, I, I didn't realize I could go and leave too. Amen. Uh, no, seriously, I, I did move away, but I wanted to come back. And God brought me back. And for this purpose here, to, to be able to be his shepherd for his people. And, and, and I take being pastor very seriously, uh, amen. Sean, let you know, I give him a hard time, but I'm also, I, 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 I love the people God has given him, you know. And amen, praise God, come on in, no one's gonna see, come on in.
He's eating around the corner.
You're gonna try to tell him, man, no one's gonna see, amen.
I was concerned if he took picture with his jacket.
Yeah, I, I, I know. Second ward.
No, Benidorm College.
Benidorm College, okay. Well, you, well, you know, I tease him all the time. He, he, he belongs to the illustrious fraternity, Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated. But he chooses to wear my fraternity colors of Omega Psi Phi fraternity incorporated. So, what he really comes in here every week is, what he's showing me is secretly he designed to be his frat and to be part, and to be part of mine, amen. And let me say this, I don't want you to think we're moving, alright? Because I know you came in, saw all the boxes, uh, amen, praise God. Those boxes are full of food. This Saturday from 10 to 12, we are going to have our first monthly free food giveaway. And so, we've done, we have, we had, our pantry booth was basically empty now. Uh, we took the food and we divided it up evenly to go into the boxes. And, uh, we have over thirty boxes over there that we're gonna give to eat to families when they come. And so, our prayer right now, now that we got the boxes and the food together, that God sent the families. We, we really like it to be a situation where we run out of food. We don't, we don't wanna have a situation where we have food, we want to run out of food. And so, that, that's why the box...
And the boxes are for members of your church?
Anyone, anyone. Anyone. In fact, you came in, you missed the side out there that said free food giveaway. I, because I'm Jamaican in this ministry, so what that means, I do a lot more than just being the pastor. I'm also the webmaster and the social media webmaster. So, all over our Facebook page, Instagram.
That's all the jobs you got?
All the jobs, the jobs I have. And so, so I've been, I've been sharing, and in fact, I have friends who are not even members of this church who have been sharing our posts. And hopefully, persons who come again, we know that those thirty plus boxes of food are not gonna end world hunger. We, we know that. But hopefully, it'll, it'll be enough that someone who probably is dealing with something, wrestling with something, going through something where they're saying, "God, I just need a small indication that you are hearing me," that'd be enough to say, "Thank you, God, you heard me," and whatnot. And, and again, it gives us a chance to serve this larger community, amen. So, so I hope, I, I, that's, I, you know, I can tell you, I got the dog and the wife and three kids and anything else. Amen, but...
Do you do that kind of collection for school supplies?
Well, we are. In fact, we've got some, we are. Uh, in fact, that'll probably be our August giveaway, because right around the time we're normally giveaways when school starts. So, we do have that, and yes, we, we, we will collect it. So, if you know anyone that's, that's interested in donating to that, you just, alright, have them bring it to church. We have a room to put it in.
Does he know you're from Connecticut?
Alright, so, yeah, where are you from?
Connecticut.
Connecticut, what part of Connecticut?
New Haven.
New Haven. How far is that away from the ESPN studios?
Well, technically, I'm twenty minutes north of me. And so, from, from my house to ESPN is probably twenty minutes.
Oh, amen.
Twenty-five minutes.
Amen.
Why, you work there?
No, I'll probably get a second job, you know. Come, come, give him a spiritual, I spent the football game.
I have ESPN there. Oh, yeah, that's where it started.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it started.
That's where Chris Furman started.
Yeah, yeah, uh, now, now ESPN has brought their college network. It's down here, it's in Charlotte here now. It's on Harris, but, yeah, it's in Connecticut. So, whenever I meet anyone from Connecticut, I'm like, "I'm from ESPN, so..."
And there's, there's, there are, um, satellite, what are those things?
Satellite dishes.
Yeah, they're probably taller than this room.
Big as a church.
And there's probably about, I don't know, fifteen, twenty of them all in there. You know, most people have bushes and trees on their front lawn, they have the satellites.
Amen, amen, because they broadcast all over the world. And as Stephen A. Smith, I say, in 252 countries, you know what I'm saying? So, amen, praise God. Okay, so, again, any questions? We're in that part, we're in that part, we are, open up in prayer, so you are in covenant prayer? So, any, Rodney had asked a question. So, let me tell you, when we were talking, when you came in, so we can bring you to where we are. And, you know, noonday is a little ahead of us. The noonday session, they're a little ahead of us, we're a little behind. That's okay. That's because of the nature, the two Bible studies, they, they work independently of each other. Same information, but we move at the speed. And so, at the Bible study noonday, one of the members kept talking about the two-story or two. And, and the two-story or two. And, and remember, if you recall, when we were looking, we were doing the prayer and we had the discussion about, uh, the story where Adam, Eve, the serpent, eating the apple or whatever fruit is, that is called the two-story or the second creation story, okay? There, there's three of them in Genesis. There's Genesis 1, and it goes from Genesis 1 to chapter 2, verse 1. And that's where God sits high lofty, and he says, "Let there be and there is," you know. That's a creation story. And in that creation story, in Genesis 1, chapter 2, chapter 1, verse 26 to 28, he says, "Let us create them in our image." "Let us create them male and female." "Male and female, He create them in His image, in, in our image." Well, that's a complete story. Once you get to your first verse of chapter 2, that story ends. What happens, we get a second story. And in that story, we say, "God creates two people, first Adam, then Eve." That story is really not about God's creative power. That story is about the, the fall of man, the depravity of man. How did sin enter the world? How did we get estranged and separated from God? That's what that story is about. In that story, Jews don't look at it as really a creation story. They look at it as the explanation of why we are the way we are and why we need God so much. Because of our disobedience, because of our nature to commit sin and, and the results thereof. The, the third creation story is a story of Noah, he builds the ark. Man has become so evil that we have released nothing but violence on the earth and we have corrupted the earth. God gets so angry, he wants to wipe out everyone and everything except for Noah, his wife, his son, their wives, and, and two of the best of everything. And he starts over. And so, that's the third creation story or the second creation story. Uh, so, he was asking, he was, Rodney was asking, what is this two-story he kept talking about? What, and I was explaining to her, it's the story with Adam, Eve, and the serpent and basically the fall of man. And so, that's, that's story. Uh, and we're gonna tackle that as we move through, more specifically as we move through. Because like we were saying today at noonday Bible study, that story is so full of symbolism. Uh, if, you just cannot read it at face value, you can get everything. There's so much happening there in the story that, that it, theologians, biblical scholars, interpreters have spent thousands of years arguing exactly what that story completely means. And so, here's the thing, we're not gonna come to, reach a, a conclusion or an answer tonight on it or anytime soon, because the discussion, the debate keeps going. But I'm gonna try to give you some of the major themes from the debate so you can see just how, how lively God's word is, you know. The interesting thing about God's word, I've said before and I said again, is that God's word, word is alive. You know, I, like, I, I like writing Star Wars books. Sometimes I'll go back and read books I've already read. They don't change, it doesn't change. I, when I read that, I'm like, "Oh, yeah, I know what's gonna come, because this is, this is what happens in the next chapter." There has never been a time when I picked up a Bible in preparation of teaching or preaching and the word has said the same thing to me. In fact, I, my very first sermon came from John 11, the story of Elijah. We just preached this the other day. And I've preached that story probably twelve different times in my life as a preacher and never have I preached it the same way. Never have I preached it the same way. His book, his story is, is almost like a living organism. And just like you change every day, it changes. And it's not that the word changes, it's the revelation that we get from it changes. Because guess what? You're not in the same place you were two days ago when you were reading that story.
Interpretation?
Experience. So, like, for example, you didn't know me two days ago. And so, now you're here and maybe something I teach, I'm teaching, like, it may answer a question that you had and other people haven't been able to answer it or it may fill in a blank for you. And that filling the blank may change the tires, the entire outlook on things. So, for example, one thing we're gonna talk about is the authorship of Genesis. Who do you think wrote, who do you think wrote Genesis? That I can put you on the spot. A lot of, if you pick up a study Bible, many study Bibles will attribute authorship of Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, and Deuteronomy to Moses, alright? They will attribute to. The problem is, is this, the oldest manuscript that we have, that we're able to carbon date it, dates in the 485 BCE. I know you're probably saying, "What's the significance of that?" Moses had been dead for two, three thousand years at that point. So, the oldest manuscript that has the Old Testament canon in there, okay, is, is dates to 485 BCE. And Moses died thousands of years before, the question should arise then, did God resurrect Moses to come back to write this book and then gonna die again? The, the truth is, the, uh, books were not written by Moses. The Old Testament that we have, before 485 BCE, was an oral tradition. In other words, Deacon Pettis here, the young sprite, lively, spry young man that he is, amen, when he gets to the point where he's an elderly gentleman, it's gonna be a long time from now, he's an elderly gentleman, we will no longer require him to go out, get a job, do anything. He will become like grandpa in the family, and he'll have one job, which is every day after dinner to gather us all around and tell us a story of Israel's history, okay? In 485 BCE, we know that the Assyrians attacked Palestine. We know by 475, the Assyrians have been superseded and replaced by the Babylonians. And when the Babylonians came, they were serious. They didn't just wanna kill, they want to capture and take Israelites back to battle, battle up, alright? The monarchy and the ruling elite did not think that they were gonna survive. Because the history was an oral tradition, they rushed and said, "Anyone and everyone that can think of a story, write it down, give it to us, we'll put it in binding of one book." So, what happens, they didn't have time to go through and say, "Okay, I like your version versus your version." They put it all together. That's why the Old Testament is quite altered, you see multiple versions of the same story. Give you, give me a good, a good example. When God gives, when God speaks the promise to Abraham, he does it twice, Genesis 15, Genesis 17. That's because two different groups are writing the stories and there, 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 uh, there's stories in there. The creation stories, multiple groups are writing the stories. They didn't have time to separate it. Have you noticed first King, first Samuel, second Samuel, first Kings, second Kings are all one story? It's this one story broken up. When you get to first Chronicles, it starts the story again. That's because the second set of writers are retelling the story from a different perspective. And so, I share that with you tonight. And let's say you go home, you start thinking about it, you're like, "That makes sense." Why, how could Moses write it if the book, the earliest copy is, is a thousand years? And why have people been saying, "What's, what's going on, Carol, outside that thing you go on?"
Right, you know, I'm not happy.
I, I'm not happy.
People been saying for fifteen hundred years, close to two thousand, that Moses wrote those first five books. And now you coming up with something new, you or your scholars or whoever. And I'm just saying, what is that gonna do for me, for my faith? How is that helping me in my...
Amen, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that. Did you want to know how I was gonna help you with your faith?
To know everything I've been believing is wrong, as you said.
I didn't say it was wrong.
Yes, you did.
I, I said it was wrong.
You saying Moses didn't write the book and all these other people...
He didn't, he didn't write the book. Here's, here's the thing.
But every Bible I have, and you're right, as far back as they can go, they, they talk about this other stuff that you're talking about. They got it in here, but they still came to conclude, he wrote the book.
Because in antiquity, okay?
I knew this story, but I'm just saying, my real question is, how is that helping me with my faith to walk?
Okay, okay.
To know this.
Okay, here's, here's the thing. For many years, we have been lied to.
But that's not a lie.
But, but, hold on, it's, it, it is, in a sense, because this is what I was gonna tell you. In antiquity, to get published, you didn't publish your name, you published someone else's name. In a time where Israel's history is on the line, where you want the people to remember it, it was smarter than to say, "Moses did this." Because Moses is considered one of the two most important people or three most important people in Israel's history. The second most important person is Elijah.
We don't have anything to prove now. He been gone for all those years.
But, hold on, let me, let me ask, let me ask you a question.
So, why would they correct it all of these years?
But, because, but here's the thing, Jews know this. This is why they laugh at us when we try to have conversations with them. Jews laugh, Jews laugh at us all, all the time when we try to have conversation with them, special things in the Old Testament. Because from their beginning, they don't teach it like we do.
That I can believe.
In fact, here's the thing, here's the thing. If you, if you were to go to, if you were to go to a Jewish person and say, you know, "I was reading Genesis." They're gonna say, "What, what's Genesis?" Because that, that's, and let me explain why. That, that, that's not the name of the book in there, you're getting...
But I don't get back to the main point.
Okay, but, but the main, but the main point is, how does this help you in your faith, okay? You serve a God of truth, okay? And if you know, if you know that the book is not written by Moses, but the book is written by a compilation of people that are trying to show God's presence, God's movement in, in Israel's birth from, from, from really Abraham on to the promised land, then what you see is there, you have a proven, uh, record of God. Once he connects himself with you, he does not abandon you. He does not leave you, that he's with you all the time, even when you screw it up. And we screw it up.
I agree with you. But now, when you were saying, when they were in the garden of Eden... I agree with you, but now when you were saying, when they were in the garden of Eden, he asks them, where are you? And you saying they wrote, he didn't know where he was. That's not helping my faith at all.
But no, but no, but don't. The reason, see, see, you're stuck on me saying, he didn't know. But but you, but 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 right, but 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 if you, but if, I also said, for the authors that wrote Genesis to, the Yahweles, their belief system is not about a God that's all-knowing, that's not important for the Yahweles. What's important, wait a second, let me finish. What's important for the Yahweles is a God that has the power to resolve anything. And so for that group, the creation story in there, they're not concerned about whether or not God knew exactly where Adam and Eve were. They were more concerned that does God have the power to correct the fault, to correct the sin that Adam and Eve created with their disobedience, okay? Now, here's the thing, you have Christians, you have some Christian believers, to this day, it's not important whether or not God knows the fact, to to know that God knows it and then and then God hasn't done it causes more problems for them. What they wanna know, does God have the power to resolve this? And you've got people that you're, you're, you're going to interact with, who are gonna say, I know God knows it because I'm going through it. I've been going through it for the last eighty years, this is what I'm dealing with. My question is not, does he know, my question is, can he resolve? You're getting in a, a story right here where you could point them to and say, let me show you something. This is where man messed it up. God not only was a, has been able to fix it because you can take them all the way to Jesus, but you can also show how he begins implementing the power to start making things right. And and this is the beginning, this story begins the story of God's redemptive process. Because here's the thing, I argue this all the time. Eden had to be heaven. It had to be a piece of heaven on earth, let me tell you why. Because here's the thing, you don't punish me with something I got to do anyway. When, we, we've all got kids, when they mess up, we don't say, you know what you're gonna do? You're gonna do your homework. They're supposed to do their homework, it's homework! You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't, you don't punish them with homework? The schools already punished them with homework and they punished you because now you gotta check their homework. But you know what you say to them, that's it, you're not going out. You forget hanging out with Timmy and John for two weeks. You're gonna bring yourself in here, you're gonna read, you're not going to the party, you're not going to the game. You take something away from them that they have. To punish Adam and Eve and say, because of your disobedience, you're gonna die, that meant at some point they had immortality.
That's right, I agree.
He tell you, and 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 the, and 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 the problem is, you know, the problem is, many of us when we read that, don't get a tree, we, we read it as if the tree is poisonous. It's not poisonous, it's the fact that now you know what God knows. You know the distinction between right and wrong. Now here's the problem, Paul later argues, praise God for Jesus, cuz Jesus taught me the difference between right and wrong. And now that I know the right and wrong, with grace I can avoid the wrong and with grace I can do what's right. But the, but the, some, you guys some, other theologians will argue, wait a second, but God had us in a place of naivety, a childlike naivety, where we didn't have to worry about things. And now because we know right from wrong, we've lost that childlike innocence and now we're subject to death. And so now, so here, you have a story where when someone's asking you this question, Sister Kara's like, why do we have to die? Why must we die? I heard it said, for the time I'm born, I'm on the countdown to death. It's because, a consequence of learning the difference between right and wrong. Go ahead, love.
You can go through your regular one, I'm, I didn't want you, love.
No, you're alright, I like this, I like this, I, no, no, you're alright, I like this.
Let's get into the king to hear the question, so did I.
Okay.
Okay, so sorry.
No, you're alright. So no order back, let it go, let it go, Sean. No, 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 don't try to lose order back, amen.
Yeah, it's not a religion politics, huh?
Amen, oh Lord, amen, amen, amen. Our study for Genesis, the book of Genesis, 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 the beginning of God's love relationship with us. Let me see your mind before saying that, mine's got charring, my, mine's got charring, yeah, I mean, yeah. It has been said that this book is an open love letter to anyone that reads it. That in this book, you see the extent and the lengths that God goes through to demonstrate his love to us, alright? You see the betrayal he has to experience, you see the abandonment, you see the abuse, but you also see the fidelity of a husband loving his wife. You know, and you know, and get, get to the New Testament following, they're talking about we being, the church being the bride of Christ, being the bride of God. So if we're the bride, he's taken us, we're now his wife, amen. So we see the fidelity of God even in the midst of the infidelity of humanity, alright? And so if this is the open, I'm sorry, if this is the, i- the open love letter to us, then Genesis has to be the beginning, the introduction of that love letter to us, alright? And before we get into the actual scriptures, I wanna walk us through some, some background, because I think this is very important. Because remember when we said Genesis is like, is a conglomeration, a mashing together of a whole lot of stories? And it's a whole lot of moving parts. And it looks easy to read Genesis, many times we read Genesis straight through, cuz we thought we were reading from one author. You're reading from multiple au- authors. And I promise, when something happens, there's multiple story, I will show you the multiple stories. So you can see how the au- authors are mov- moving. But let's look at a couple of things, but look at some, and let's do an analysis of Genesis as a literary work, a historical record and a theological perspective, okay? Genesis got its name from the very first words written in the chapter in the beginning, okay? This is what I was getting, saying, we were talking, that if you walked up to a Jewish person, say, you know, I was at Bible study and we were talking about Genesis, uh, they're gonna look at you like, huh, what, what's Genesis? They know what it is, but they think we've got it wrong. Because the Hebrew, the the, and the practice antiquity at this time was, your books got their names, not because you sat around and came up with a crappy, catchy name for your book. It got its name, they got their names from the first few letter, first few words of the book. And in the, in, in the, in the, in the first chapter of Genesis, the first three words are, in the beginning. Now, Aramaic, there's no language called Hebrew, alright, it's Aramaic. Hebrew is an ethnicity, okay? So when someone says, you know, they were speaking Hebrew, you ought to look up and say, what's Hebrew? Hebrew is an ethnicity, it's not a language. Aramaic, the Aramaic word that literally is in the beginning is the word Bereshit. I know what that last four words look like, it's pronounced sheet, not the other way, okay? Bereshit, alright? Those, that word literally means in the beginning. So to Jews, when you're talking about Genesis, they're like, oh, they don't even know the book is named Bereshit. And so that, that's, that's, that's the name of it. It it now, and again, in the Jewish tradition, it wasn't Genesis. So the question becomes, how did uh, uh, the, how did we get Genesis, alright? The, in the, in about, shortly after, you know, his historical wise, Alexander the Great conquered Babylon, okay? He also established Greek as the universal language of the day. You know, our English is the language that we, that we expect everyone to speak? Well, Greek, Greece was a world power for a while and Greek was established. Even when Romans captured Greece, they adopted Greek as the primary language. They still spoke Latin, but Greek was the universal language. Alexander the Great, by capturing Babylon, ended up taking possession of the Israelites in Babylon. And so Xerxes and other Babylonian leaders found Jewish customs and law very wise. Alexander the Great was no different. So he had these Jews sitting in his court, talking about Jewish affairs. He's listening, he's like, wow, that's pretty awesome. You know, I would like to be able to read it, to read what you're talking about. The Jews at the time tell him, well, our scriptures are in Aramaic, there are no Greek version of it. He said, if I paid you, would you translate the scriptures? They said yes. So what he did, he got seventy Jewish speaking, uh, that speaking, Jews that could also read and write, uh, and speak Greek. He paid them to translate the Jewish scriptures. What's amazing about the story is that all seventy Jewish, these, these translators, translated the word exactly the same. How many of us remember the telephone game? We, we had a line, I started on in, say something and we see what it, and it changes. That's the reality of life. Even now, you have redactors, one of the benefits of doing things electronically now is if we make one change on the master copy, all the subsequent copies have the same change. But e- but even when you, when you have the human, what we call redactors, copiers, they would make errors and and depending in these other, like in Aramaic, it's hieroglyphic with, with accents. And depending on where you put the accent, it depends on the vowel sound. So if I put the accent, cuz I'm tired and I put it two letters over, I have completely changed the word, it does not mean the same. And so the amazing thing was that these seventy Jew, Greek-speaking Jews, translated exactly the same, and so the, the assumption was that had to be God. Because reality is, that doesn't happen. And so from that we get the, the Greek version of the Old Testament called the Septuagint. Septua, seventy jet writings, seventy writings. And what happened, Alexander the Great got a, got a, got a Bible. Now, there is no Greek word that perfectly translates from Bereshit. So what the Jewish writers did, they took a word that means origin, Genesis, and they made an approximation of the, of the word, Aramaic word, Bereshit. That's how we get, get Genesis. A synonym of origins is beginnings. And we have kept that title, that name for the book. But Genesis is not the appropriate actual name of this book. It's the book that was, that, that the Greeks gave it when they translated Aramaic in the Greeks and that we have kept when we translated their Greek version into English. That, that's, that, that, that's how, that's, that's how we, we've, we've got it, uh, amen. Now, Genesis as a work, literary work, alright? Let's put God to the second for a second, as a literary work, it speaks to several desires, okay? The scientists, it speaks to the scientist's fascination with the birth of the cosmos and the origin of life on earth. How, any, any scientists in here? Any scientists, okay, let me, let me remind you. When you use a scientific method, whatever you're trying to prove or disprove, the opposite has to be taken as true. You start from the position, if you're trying to disprove that God did not, disprove that God created all existence, you have to start with the, what the proposition that he did. And through your, through your scientific method of testing, retesting, verifying data, you seek to show that your hypothesis was wrong or your hypothesis is right. Every anthropologist, even Darwin himself, started with the proposition that God created the world. They have gone from there to wherever they've gone. Darwin's survival of the fittest, whoever these scientists came up with, the bit bang theory, that it was two atoms colliding together. The problem with the bit bang theory is they never get to a conclusion because it's, it, cuz another thing with doing a scientific method, your method should be able to repeat for other people. And when other people have repeated their method, they've come to this question, who created the two particles that collided? They're stuck. They're, they're, they're stuck with the chicken and the egg, you know what I'm saying? If God didn't create things, then who created the two particles? Alright, if God created two particles, why then does, why then does, we, we don't see God, we can't touch God? But that, that's, but that's a scientist's explanation, fascinating there. You have physicists who do nothing every day but sit at a chalkboard with these formulas, trying to disprove this and the problem is, they can't. But this Genesis, they start with this proposition right from Genesis, that God created the world. The anthropologists, they're another scientist. The anthropologists hear this story, that God created everything, but then they found Lucy in Africa. And we carbon dated Lucy, so we know Lucy, we think Lucy is the first, I think that's the name they gave her, was it, the first person that stood upright. And so the question becomes, which one is right? Is Lucy, her evident, her remains? Does that speak to the creation, cuz we can date that? Or do we speak to what's in the Bible? Now let me, let me plug, I'm gonna upset you again, I'm gonna upset you, let me go ahead. It's like ta- it's like taking bad taste in medicine, let me go ahead and give it, so you can get it out the way as we get, we can be friends afterwards, alright? Amen. We cannot look at the Bible like we look at us, as an elementary, junior high, high school history book, okay? The problem is, the Bible does not date itself, the Bible does not give us clues to specific times. Now sometimes, through archaeological studies and historical studies, we can kind of trace some of these stories back, but some of these stories don't have a, a, a historical counterpart. What we consider, we consider the Bible a historiography, a blending of the word his- historical and bibliography, a historiography. Basically where history is being used to write a bibliography about someone. And the bibliography here is really about God and his relationship with, with uh, human beings, alright? So, saying that, uh, I just, just in case, Kara, I just wanna make sure as we get it out, amen. A- a- amen, uh, that, 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 it's, 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 it's historiography. It's no different from the Roman believe, uh, 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 the Roman believe for Remus and Rom- Romans, Romans. Romans, Remus, raised by the, the wolf and how, that's their creation story. It's just a historiography of, 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 of the, of the people and the relation with their God, alright? Amen. The historian's interest in the beginning of civilization. Um, I went to school, my major undergrad was political science. You know what that means, we spent all this time talking about how civilization, civilization came through, came about. Sociologists also spend a lot of time talking about it, because they're looking for the social reasons for that. Political, political science are looking for the political reasons, the, the reasons, uh, uh, the, the reason why we would sacrifice our, our own power and put it into a government, alright? But historian also has a reason, and really we're, we're different versions of historians. Why did, did humanity come together as a civilization? Genesis points us to a, a reason why we came together as civilization, mainly because we were created to be a community. And so for the historian, it, it helps the historian, uh, build in the, uh, uh, the, answer some questions about the beginnings of civilization, the family. How many of us have, have had, been around, we were our children, they asked that one question. Where did we come from? Here you, we, we sound like bumbling idiots. Well, uh, you know, the Bible said, in the beginning, God created this. Well, what was there before God created it? They were like, uh, I don't know, and you know, little kid, they won't take that. What do you mean, you don't know? Uh, was there, was there not a house, was there not a home, did he have friends or what? And so now you're sitting there like, Jesus, can a Mickey Mouse cartoon come on right now so I can stop answering these questions? Well, guess what? Our families had that, we don't ever lose that, we just learn not to ask a question and, and embarrass someone. But we all wanna know where we come from, we all wanna know what our lineage is. Mark can make it very specific to show that Jesus, we are connected to Jesus and we have a lineage that goes all the way back to Adam. That's not by accident. That is to show new Christians, that you didn't just come out of nowhere. That you actually are part of a movement that God has been working through eternity to bring about. In fact, David says, you knew me before you formed, you knew me in my mother's womb. Which means that on, 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 on another level, we existed before we had form because God thought about us. You know, here's the, you know, this whole theological perspective, things come into being because God thinks it. So even then, we didn't have form, God thought about us. And then we, we, we had some kind of existence. Uh, but this is one, another one to interest, here's another one. The theology, the theology is concerned for, about the founding events of religious traditions. Why do we believe what we believe? Alright, so let me, let me stop for a second. Theology. Theo, Greek means God, ology, study, study of, study of God. Oh, it's God study of, alright? Let me say this, the best theology is still foolish. Paul always talks about it. He says, to the Greek or the wise, faith in God, the crisis is foolish. Because the best we can articulate about God, so let's say we spent today, we come up with, God is this, 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 these three things. God is this, 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 these three things, and we leave. Tomorrow, God shows him, says, well, I lost this fourth thing, and now we gotta start the discussion over again. Our best, this is what Paul means, but our best understanding is but a cloudy picture, a cloudy reflection. That we won't fully see God, understand God, uh, uh, who he is till we lift God, and here's the thing, once we get there, we ain't coming back. I'm sorry, love, I love you, I met, nice to meet you, but God, God take me out between now and next Wednesday, you come back next Wednesday, someone else will be here doing Bible study, I'm not coming back to answer Carol's question, to say, this is exactly why you need to know that Moses did not write it, because God said X, Y, and Z. I'm not coming back, I'm, I'm, I'm in heaven, I'm staying, amen. Praise God. Uh, Sister Hattie said she had a, uh, this morning, said she had a bet with her best friend, and two of them are young kids, made a promise, that whoever got to heaven first would come back and tell the other one, uh, what heaven was like. She said she ain't heard from her best friend, yeah. Cause again, we, we, we're not, we're not coming back. Uh, but, but theology is our, our attempt to understand a God that's beyond our ability to, to basically perceive. And so, and so, I know that sounds a little confusing, but look at this chair. This chair is a created thing. If you ask this chair to describe me, it's only, can only describe me as its creator. Someone like him built me so that when he wants to sit down, he can sit on top of me, but it cannot tell me who I, it cannot tell anyone or me who I am as a husband, it cannot tell me who I am as a son, as a brother, as a father, as a pastor, as a friend. It can only see me in the light of, of its purpose. Here's the thing. As wonderful as we are, we were created for a purpose, we can only understand God through the purpose we were created. This is why Joe, God says a joke, where were you when I formed the heavens and the earth? Where were you when I birthed stars and named them? Where were you when I made the mountains and everything? Did I seek your counsel? He's, he's said my ways are so beyond your ways, it's not even funny. And so, what, so that, so that what the theologian tries to do, the theologian in his or her own limited way, recognizing his or her limits, is trying to explain God in a rational way. And this is why we have, uh, as many theologians as we have flavors of ice cream, alright? You have, uh, 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 Central American, Latin, or Catholic Latin liberation theology, you have Latin liberation theology, you have womenist and feminist theologians, really liberation theology, there are flavors of liberation theology. Uh, because it, cause all, and you have Asian liberation theology, one is Mencian theology. I used it when I was writing my doctorate. Uh, you have all these different groups that are looking at the scripture, the way it's written, and they're saying, wait a second. God is not an oppressor, he's a liberator of the oppressed. And where in there do I find God liberating someone like, someone like me? And how does that liberation speak to me? You have what's called process theology. From this term, everything is part of the process. In fact, thi- this is the, when someone dies, we console them from the pulpit and we say, God knew this day was coming. Process. Also predetermined, predetermination, it's a combination too. But then on Sundays, uh, oh, we, we say that on Thursday at the funeral, but on Sunday, we say, you have a choice! You can choose God, or you can not choose God, now we're back to free will theology. Well, God doesn't know the, know the answer, he only knows the choices. Now, you're not gonna like that. Now, your husband not gonna like that, because what that says, you have, that, that says you have a omniscient God. A- 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 amen, a- a- amen. And we, here's the thing, remember, theology is our best attempt to explain a God that's unexplainable. And so, the problem with every theology is, whatever you say, you're subject to the questions of someone else's theology. You know what I'm saying? Uh, 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 transformative theology. You know what his biggest critique is? Once the person or the thing is transformed, now what? It's been so much time talking about the transformation that God is making. Now that we're transformed, what do we go, what do we do from here? The problem with, when, when I was writing my theology, I, in my, my dissertation, one of my, uh, faculty professors, faculty members, said to me, oh, you're black, you pastor of black church, so why didn't you use black liberation theology? And it was an appropriate question, because I was using Mencian theology, which is a Korean Christian liberation theology. And on top of that, there are Mencian theology, theologians that say, even though we have really adopted much, much of our theology from black liberation theology, theology, no one else but Koreans should use this theology. So one of my professors was aware of that, and so he said, how are you gonna answer that in your, in your dissertation? So my answer to that was this. Yes, tho- those few did make the statement that only Koreans should use that theology. However, the general approach is that Mencian theology is for anyone that's a victim. The purpose of Mencian theology is to give the victim a voice. When we read the Bible, what we see is God interacting with the victimizer, with the, with the, with the valuator, with the sinner. The question arises, after God has dealt with the sinner, how, what does God do for the sin against? The victim. And Mencian theology speaks to God pulling from the Bible, how God gives the sin against the victims a voice. My dissertation was in, was in the context of persons that grew up without parents in their childhood. Whether because of physical absence or emotional absence. And what I was learning was many of my persons in my contest felt they didn't have a voice. So I was able to say, here it is, I can use black liberation theology, but here's the problem, most of the parents are black. They're not white parents that love black children. They're, so I, so first of all, it doesn't even factor in. We have to change, if we're gonna use, we have to find some liberation theology that takes the, the issue of color out, out of the picture, and, and, and focus on something else. My people are victims. As children, they had no power, whether not mom and dad stayed, or whether not mom and dad invested in their lives. They can only deal with what, what they were given, so they're victims. Their parents are the sinners. And sin in this case, that parenting is a ministry. It's one of the, one of the ministries that God assigns to all of us, soon as we become parents, we're all ministers. And failure to raise children, cause I have scriptures and all that, really is an act of disobedience. And God says disobedience is sin, so that means a, a parent that does not fulfill his or her responsibility to his child, that God has required, is now a sinner. And so, if they're the sinner, the kids have to be the sin against, the victims. And what I was able to show, and what I did, my, my faculty instructor, like, oh, I love it. He said, I just wanted to see if you could get it, and whatnot. But again, the question that even against that is, one of the shortcomings of Mencian theology is, sometimes it has enabled victims to turn around and be victimizers, excuse me, to turn around and be victimizers. That the victims, the person that was sin against, turn around and take the sin that was imposed against them, and, and, and they impose against others, and, 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 and so that's a drawback in that theology. But again, it's our best attempt to explain. Genesis is someone's, some group's best attempt to explain how the relationship with God got started. Let me also say, go ahead, ask questions, we're gonna say, ask, go for your ask questions.
I wanted you to say that sentence again.
That last sentence?
Yeah.
Genesis is someone or some group's best attempt at explaining our relationship with God. And explaining God. Cause think about this. God says in Exodus, chapter twenty-three, the second commandment is, you shall make no graven image of me. In other words, you shall not make a wood, metal, any kind of image of me. So God doesn't want us to conform a limit to his image. But he appears as a smoke pot, a burning flame, he appears as, uh, uh, a pillar of cloud, a pil- a, a pillar of fire, he appears as a handwriting on the wall, he appears as a son of man in a burning, uh, 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 a burning, uh, no, no, uh, furnace, he appears as a burning bush, you know? Uh, he, he appears as clouds that descend on the heaven, and the thunder is his voice. He, he's got all these different images, but he says don't make an image of him.
The pillar of fire that held back the Egyptians if they were born into the promised land?
It's the same pillar of fire that led them through the, at nighttime, through, through the promised land. He says, oh, here's, here's another one. In fact, some, this is why Jews have a problem with asking many of these questions, cause we ascribe Jesus' image to God. And one thing they don't agree with us, he's, he was a man, he was, he was a man. Now, we all say that he's part of man, part of God. The problem is, Jews remember that you should not ascribe any image to God. And so, one of the reasons they have an issue, have a hard time believing with us in Jesus, is that by ascribing God's likeness to Jesus, we've now ascribed vantage to him. We've now given him a graven image. And, and here's the thing, how could, if Jesus really was the son of God, how could the son of God come, and the first thing he does is violate God's law? And, and, but this is where we get into the conversation where Paul, where Paul says, Jesus did not come to extinguish the law, or to negate the law, he came to give it its most perfect embodiment, its most perfect fulfillment. And in Jesus, we see the, all the law realized perfectly. And so, that's, that, but that's the discussion. Paul was having that argument, because that's what some Pharisee, cause he's a Pharisee, his Pharisee brothers saying that like, how can you betray us, betray God, and now say that you worship this person who's now a graven image of God? And that's why he's saying that. That's his argument. But he's making a theological argument. And here's the beauty of it, he's making a theological argument with no New Testament. Now, when he writes his letters, Mark, Luke, Matthew, and John have not, well, Matthew, Luke, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, in that order. But it's really Mark, Matthew, Luke, and John, that's the publication order. They weren't written yet, they're not written until after the disciples are all dead, and Paul is dead. And so, here it is, what, what is Paul basing it on? Paul, all he has is Torah, and his interaction, his faith in God, his interaction with God, God's revelation to him, and he's seeing as God is revealing to him how God has made this perfect revelation, this perfect fulfillment of the law in Jesus. But he's making a theological argument. In fact, try this one. I think it's Thessalon, the first Thessalonica, first Thessalonians, the letters in the Church of Thessalonica. It's either that or, uh, Philippians. He talks of, no, that's his first Thessalonians. He goes on and on about Christ having a body, actually living, suffering, dying. We read that, cause we think, okay, he's teaching us that Christ lived, Christ suffered, Christ died. He's not. He's having an argument with a group of people that no one resists. They wrote nothing. He's having a group of, arguing with a group called the Gnostics. They get their name from the Greek word gnosis, which means knowledge. And really, they believe in this secret knowledge. And this whole idea was that Jesus never was a real person, was just a spirit. And he moved from spirit to body to body, and he used the body, like we see on some of these horror movies and stuff, for, for purpose, and when he was done, he moved from there, like Jesus was never crucified. In fact, that was Judas up on the, on the cross that was crucified, Jesus' spirit had left and moved on. And so, Paul, when he's writing that, we don't have the work that he's referring to, but he's writing in response to another written work. And he's, this is why he's saying to church, I insist that you know that Christ was real. He came, he lived, he had a body, he suffered, he died, he was buried, he was resurrected, because at that time, there are competing, the Christian canon doesn't exist then, as it exists now. And there's competing influences for who Christ is and what they're teaching. And that's why he said it, but we don't have it. All we have is his work. And so, what happened, when we see it, we say, oh, God, Paul is really embracing home who Jesus was. No, he's teaching, he's saying to his, his post, don't fall for the okie doke, don't fall for this over here, know that, that Jesus is real, but he's still speaking a theology. Still doing a theology, amen, amen. That's, I, I, I love questions, but again, you're not inter, you're not breaking me down, interrupting me by asking questions, amen. Even though the early church fathers set Genesis in the Christian canon as a separate individual book, individual book, it's not. It's written as a whole. In fact, let me say this, you're gonna hear me say, especially since we're in the Old Testament, Old Testament canon versus New Testament canon. Now, remember, the Old Testament is a complete work before any first New Testament book is written, alright? It stood alone, it existed alone. So let me go back to Meshach, Shara, and Venedigal, you know, us preachers. We love to get to the end of the story where Nebuchadnezzar comes off his own, looks down through the, the opening in the fiery furnace and says, how many people did we throw in there? And it said, three. I see a pork, he looks like the son of God. We like to crystal, uh, crystal, whatever the word is, to make that Christ. That's Christ. That Jesus came down to the Jews, that's God. The Jews were asked to confess that God was one, he didn't need anything, any, anybody, any, in a myriad of representatives. In fact, this is why, uh, Moses has said multiple, he has said through the Old Testament multiple times, here, O Israel, the Lord your God is one. Daniel, Jesus came down, he shut the lion's mouth, and Daniel. It's, it sounds good to preach, and everyone gets up and, yeah, theologically, scripturally, that's not correct, it's God. When, 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 uh, now, here's a funny thing, uh, like, I, I preached that too long about Elijah, and with, with the prophets of Baal, and what we try to find Jesus in there, you know what we say, he's the rock. Because we see the sacrifice on the right, he's the sacrifice and the rock, and God coming out with fire consumes the, the fire, the wood, the sacrifice and the rock, and the water, cause he said he's a water too, that's God's confirmation that he's sending Jesus to use his, no. For the Jews, God honored Elijah's sacrifice, because Elijah was the only one in Israel who remained faithful to God. No Jesus. And so, you're gonna hear me talk about an Old Testament canon versus a New Testament canon. The New Testament canon, we have it all. The Old Testament canon stands alone, just those books. And these books, Genesis, again, these are names that have been given. Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Numbers and Deuteronomy were understood as one book, in one story. It's one ongoing story. God creating the world, God establishing his, uh, uh, of his relationship with, with, with Adam, I'm not Adam, Abraham, and the creation of the people, bringing them out of, uh, suffering, through the wilderness, through the promised land, it's one story. We have, in fact, I say what?
No, I just, I just said it really is.
It is. In fact, what, what happened, later redactors, so that we could have graphs on things, separate all this stuff into chapters, David verses, like, like, if, if you read the original manuscripts, there are no numbers, there are no chapters, it's just one story. And so, what happens, the, maybe later, uh, uh, redactors and translators broke it up in verse and chapters, so it'd be easy for the person to read. But it's not, amen, you gonna get that flag, me, me and him, we trying to get that flag, he, he driving me crazy.
He getting on everybody.
A- amen.
If my husband was here with his hat though, he would have been dead an hour ago.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow, amen, amen. Uh, so, 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 so it's, 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 it's a complete volume, it's a complete work, uh, amen. Uh, therefore, when we look at Genesis, we must not study Genesis in isolation. Okay, the temptation is when we read Genesis, we study in isolation. Here's another thing, let me, let me, I just gave y'all a hint, and I'm gonna ask this trick question. Where does the law first show up in the, in the Old Testament?
The law?
The law, where does it show up at? That's a trick question. Give it, give it a shot.
Exodus twenty-one.
Exodus twenty-three, yeah, yeah, we, we, we like to believe is Exodus twenty-three, that's when God calls Moses up on a mountain, and he, and he chisels out the, he, with his hand, with his finger, he writes the law. The law shows up in the very beginning, the very first verse, of, of, of Genesis.
Really?
Yes, cause you gotta remember, this is a written recording of an oral tradition. These stories have been told and retold, retold, so much so, that the later law has worked its way into the story, okay? So give you an example. In the scripture that I preached Sunday, that Abraham, God calling Abraham to go, leave his country, his fathers, his people in his father's house, go. I stopped in the middle of the story, if I kept going, once he gets there, he gets into Ai, Bethel, and someplace else, and he makes, he makes altars, and he sacrifices of God. These are sacrificed, these are altars built according to Leviticus. And these are sacrifices specified in Leviticus. But Leviticus is two books away. How would he know to, to, to give a praise sacrifice to God if the law wasn't already there? If, if, if the law hadn't been worked into the story? Okay?
I don't think it could have been the Holy Spirit of God directing him to do that before. I'm just asking, I don't know.
It, that, that, and I'm smirking, because that, that's the answer many people get. The, the truth is, the story, this, the law has worked, how many of y'all remember the Uncle, Uncle Remus tales, with Brer Rabbit, Brer Wolf? They're just, I remember, I, I used to love them as kids, and Disney ended up making them at one point into- And Disney ended up making them at one point into a live action, live action, before computers, live action cartoon. But here's, those stories have mores that have been read into them from the time of their creation. In fact, they were created. These are really slave stories created to teach their children without the masters hearing them teach. And so it's like apocalyptic literature. We think that the book of Revelation is what's going to come, it's actually what has already happened. It was encouragement to oppress Christians so that when their Roman conquerors and Roman overseers saw it, they would think, okay, they're talking about a praise party, they don't know that they're talking in code. This is what the slaves used to do in American slavery. Moses is coming down on the chariot, he's gonna pick up his stock and pick with us. The slave masters and overseers thought, okay, they're just singing songs of God. They didn't know that they were communicating each other, the heritage and other conductors on the underground railroad were coming to stop. Yeah, so, 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 I say all that to you to say, I've kinda lost my train of thought here. It's okay, no, no, it'll come back, it'll come back, it'll come back, it'll come back. No, no, the law, yeah, so the law, even though it doesn't show up to Exodus twenty-three, thank you, it does show up to Exodus twenty-three, it was already there. It's already there. When they are making, giving burnt offerings for forgiveness of sin, that's the sin and the guilt offering, the first and second chapter of Leviticus. And it's because God, the later, as you told us, they understood that the law was such an intricate part, that they were interweaving it into the story whenever they could. And after a while, you know what happens, we interweave it into the story so much that we think it's law. We think, I think Abraham probably did have some form of worshiping God. But I don't think it was the Leviticus sacrifices. I think that's what's been later subsequently worked into the story, but I think he did have a way. I think he praised God, go ahead.
But if Moses wrote Genesis, he would know that Abraham was making those praise sacrifices, then that's why he would.
Yes, he would. But here's a question. Why would Moses spend ninety percent of the story talking about himself in third person? Now, I do when I get mad, when I want y'all to leave me alone, so y'all better leave Al alone, cause Al about loses mine. The problem is, it's almost impossible for us to stay in that voice because it's not natural. We've always had first person single, second person single, third person single, first person plural, second person plural, third person plural. That's the nature of language. We don't ever use third person to speak about ourselves because it's not typically used for us. It's to talk about someone else, when you point your finger at someone else. We use first person to talk about us. Maybe second person to talk about us sometimes. It's very hard to do a third person. And here's the thing, if.
I get your point.
Amen, praise God. Praise God. And then here's another thing, why doesn't Moses write more highly about himself?
Well, I think he's just truthful. Anybody don't write something, they say he was the most humble man.
This is, and I could be, this is where I found, most people are only as humble as it serves their purposes. Amen. There are humble people. And they're, but again, it serves some kind of purpose. I've noticed those people who are truly humble are humble because they don't want to be in the light. So they do everything they can to pull the light off of them, so they go deeply into the humility back. You know, so it's humble, go ahead.
We were just, well, I was talking at dinner tonight about an auto shop instructor that I am very close with. And I was telling Carol and Sean that between the two of us, you know, I am so grateful for what he does for our students. And he has said that he appreciates what I do. But I don't wanna hear, I don't wanna hear that from him, and he doesn't wanna hear it from me because we just, we do what we do because we wanna do it for our students and we don't wanna be in the light. So that's exactly what we were talking about.
Amen. Amen. And in fact, sometimes when I meet someone that's so humble that it almost disappears in the background, my question is, why? Why are you that humble? Because our human nature is not, is not to be flamboyant and arrogant, but to let you know I'm here. Even if it's simply, I'm here, you don't have to ask me no questions, I'm here. But persons that blend in the background, I'm concerned because what isn't you afraid of me knowing about you that you're pulling back? And so when you read, so here's another question. If people are that humble, why are we seeing all these bibliographies written? So these autobiographies, not bibliographies, these autobiographies. Those are sub-bibliographies. Why, and I know people wanna share their life and want to, want to.
Make money.
Yeah, make money, but they want to share their truths. But the truth is, they wanna make money and they want to, they're trying to record their lives for posterity. Who knows, five hundred years from now, we come back.
But your question about why or what's going on with that person who wants to be that humble or doesn't wanna be that visible, that could be for that moment.
It could be, it could be.
I mean, that's not my way to like come in this environment and not talk. You know, because I wanna participate, but there are other situations where I know everything that's going on, but I'm not participating. And that doesn't make me humble.
Right, no, that is.
But it does make me want to just not be on camera.
To pull back.
So I think that, you know, the humbleness comes to people depending on the situation.
And I agree with you, I agree with you. In fact, I actually agree with you. Couldn't say it better. I think we're saying the same thing, really. Like I said, sometimes you don't wanna be, like my mom used to tell me, there are times you're gonna learn things and it's so much better you hold it and keep your mouth shut, don't say a thing because you save it for a certain time. And then there's other times you need to speak up because you don't need people to run over you. You know what I'm saying? It's with everything. But I just, to me, there's a spectrum. You have that person that's loud, that's always wants you to see him, that's one in. They have a mirror opposite that's always doing something not to be seen. And the question becomes, why are you always doing something not to be seen? So, but I think, honestly, did you get him? Oh, there he is. I know. I'm gonna hurt you if I swat him, he's on your shoulder. I wanna get, I don't wanna hurt you. Amen.
I'll stop.
It's okay, it's okay. It reminds me of the, of the Stir Crazy where Gene Wilder is falling to fly and it lands on the back of the man's head and he slaps it and they're in jail and the man gets up, he gets up, he keeps getting up, he keeps getting up. Gene Wilder's eyes go like this. All the way up, and Richard Pryor goes, woo, he gonna kill us, he gonna kill us. And what happened, when what happened, Gene was just falling to fly and he landed and he didn't think about it, he swatted the fly on the guy's head. And the funny thing is, so the guy takes a swing at Gene Wilder and Richard Pryor pulls him back and he hits a bigger dude. And they're all like, oh my God, so loud, and they all got a language that's going on. And if you haven't seen it, go see, it's in the jail scene with them, when they're in the jail scene, when they're first arrested. But it's so funny. But Gene, I mean, he swatted that head, he didn't think about it, but he realized he hit someone's head, he's like. And whatnot, so, but yeah. Let me see what time, okay, it's about eight twenty, it's about eight twenty, amen. We usually go to about eight fifteen, why don't we pause here? Amen. Good questions, good interaction, good conversations. Listen, Carol, amen, good question, amen.
I hope they'll think I'm trying to.
I keep telling you, it's alright.
They give the most, utmost respect. But I just wanna ask the question.
And you have every right to ask a question, you have every right to participate and talk. And I can tell you, I welcome it, we welcome it, that's how we learn. That's how we learn, that's how we learn. Are there any prayer concerns you wanna look up before we leave here tonight?
Just one thing, you mentioned about humility.
Yes.
And I guess, first thing that came to mind was Jesus, I mean, he's supposed to be our example.
I do, I do, I do, I do, I do. Amen, I do.
And, you know, again, a lot of times when you read, you guys show humility, but other times, you show the opposite.
He becomes a roar, he becomes a roaring lion. Becomes a roaring lion. In fact, he says some things, I'm gonna give you an example of what I think is not humility, is roaring lion. He pulls out the scripture, Isaiah, he reads, it says, this day in your hearing, the scriptures are gonna fulfill. He had to know that that was going to set that synagogue off. He had to know that people were gonna start picking up rocks and say, stone him. But he said it anyway. He's like, I know he's on my head, I know, I know, I know. I'm trying to knock myself out. Wait, 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 wait. But then he talks about, it's on a slide, she turned the other cheek. You know, he says Peter, Peter takes off a knife, cuts off a soldier's ear. And he says peace, he says peace. Then it follows up, says, don't you know that if I wanted to fight, I could call on twelve legions of my father's best angels? Not twelve, the best ones. Which means there's some bad ones, the bad ones, I can't fight, the best ones, and wipe out all humanity? Twelve legions. And so here's the thing, in that moment, that's not a humility moment, that's a moment of power and of roaring lion. So we see it constantly, it's a double edged sword here that Jesus really, he teeters on. And he's very careful about when he plays the humility part, when he plays the roaring lion part. Go ahead, Doc.
When we're playing the humility part of this, would you consider the humility of certain people to be sheepish or timid? Or would you, would it be more like the undercover hero?
It says who we're talking about.
Like, you ever seen that show, Undercover Hero? I always had, I remember I had a dream one time, I hit the Mega Millions and I was like, a billionaire, right? And my first thing was, I wanted to see if people would like me. Because of me, of the money I had. So what I did is vivid, well drawn, I was dreaming on the way I came from. Anyway. What I did was I went to, I went to a hobo. Now, I actually bought his clothes, right? Got it as dirty and filthy as smelling as I could. And I went to a car dealership.
Right, right, right.
And see who would wait. You know what I'm saying, I went there and I was talking to the salesman, one of the salesman was a young guy and the one was an older guy. The older guy came to me first and he said, sir, we don't, we don't serve your clientele. You know, we don't have any public restrooms, there's nothing in here. But that was, you know, being, I guess, roaring lion?
That's being, you were undercover being humble, coming in there, so they didn't really know we were.
Okay, so, the young man came to me, he came to me with a bottle of water. He's like, are you hungry? I, you know, are you hungry? I still got half a sandwich left for my lunch. Would you like to have it? And at the end of it, I ended up buying a car. I gave this dude like a two hundred percent commission. I'm like, you know what, this young man, in his short life span, has shown me more kindness than you and you've been here for seventy-five. So I gave him a two hundred percent commission and he quit same day. The young guy quit same day, because he got two hundred percent.
See ya, peace.
That was a very vivid dream.
So sometimes your dreams are. I tell you one thing I'm planning to do, it won't be anytime soon because I don't have any social medicine to do this with. But definitely I'm gonna come to church dressed up as a homeless person. I'm gonna come up stinking and everything. No, you won't. I'm gonna make sure, oh, I didn't tell you, in high school and college, I was in the drama club. So, I'm not gonna speak with this voice. I will make sure that I have some clothes I've worn a couple times, cutting grass, at least. I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. And the whole thing is, I'm gonna see how the church responds. And at some point, when they're like, okay, sir, you gotta get out of here, I'm gonna pull off the disguise, I'm like, it's Pastor. Yeah, oh, God, yeah, I come from a, I come from a church. I come from, I come from, my home church. They would probably be, they were probably, amen. They would probably run me out if I came in looking like that.
And the craziest thing, the craziest thing that in the church, you can find the most humble people, you can also find the biggest hypocrite.
Well, and this is, this is something that I've been wrestling with.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, hypocrisy. And Sean and I have had this conversation for many years.
Go on to that some.
Well, just that I was raised Catholic.
Okay, amen. But she.
July six, two thousand sixteen.
When you gave your life to Christ. Okay, amen. But you were saying you were raised Catholic.
I was raised Catholic by an honest mother. And I had been looking, I've been looking for years, like even in high school. The town I live in, if you ever heard of Chilt Rosemary Hall? That's where President Kennedy went to high school. And so that church was a non-denominational church, it was geared towards high school students. The homily, for lack of a better term, was geared towards high school age students. And I never got that from the Catholic Church. You know, you'd have the Old Testament, you'd have the New Testament, you'd have the Bible, I mean, the Gospel. You'd have the homily, but, okay, now you're talking about four eighty-five BCE. I'm talking about nineteen eighty, how are you going to, how am I going to apply this? You know, nineteen hundred, well, nineteen eighty minus thirty-two years later, how am I gonna apply this to my life? And so one of the things that Sean and I have talked about a lot is that exactly what Ron said about the hypocrisy is that, you know, somebody says that they are Christian.
And then don't happen.
And then, and so that confuses me. I don't understand that.
Yeah, my grandmother used to tell me, standing in the hooting and hollering in the church don't make you anymore of a Christian, that standing in the garage makes you a Catholic.
I say that, let me speak to that. I teach from the perspective of being a servant leader, okay? My first job is to serve you. Let me serve you, okay? If I can use the example as a waiter, alright? The waiter's job is to serve you, bring your food. My job is to bring God to you so that you in turn can bring God to someone else, alright? Now, I try to model for you what it looks like. Now, let me go ahead and say, I'm human. You know, I have my moments too. Just ask my wife, she's like, oh, he's as cranky as he can be when he gets up in the morning. It takes her about two hours to get to this lovable place that you see me now. Amen, amen, don't talk to me, leave me alone. Coffee won't do it, I just got, I'm.
Now, mind you, we just met tonight, so you don't wanna be giving away too many. Something hasn't gotten here.
Amen, but I'm sharing that with you because I call myself the old rudibaby. You know, you start me up, you gotta let me sit in the driveway and just warm up a little bit. Because guess what? There are more people who are like me than not. Not many of us get up, bright rays of sunshine, okay? And he does, amen. What you're trying to say, she wanna sleep in the morning time, Sean, and you just there talking. Hey, now, the funny thing is, that's my wife. I'm laying in the bed, she's like, are you asleep? I'm like, yes. Have you thought about this? No. Are you gonna get up? No. No. She, well, I wanna get up, get up, go home. We got, we got five other TVs in this house, you can go wherever. I'm, I'm not that kind of person, but, but I'm sharing this with you, to be real with you, because many people think that because I'm pastor, I'm the, uh, the leader, the recognized leader in this church, I must be Jesus like. All right, and, and that's a fallacy.
Oh, yeah, and I, I don't, I don't like to think that of.
You, you don't, you, you don't, but that, that's a prevailing thought, and one of the things I try to teach is that there's one Jesus, okay? And that we have to be careful of someone who's trying to locate in them Jesus, or approximate Jesus. There's nothing wrong with approximating what he did and approximating his commandments, but there's one Jesus, okay? Now, eh, cause he, he, yeah, cause here's the thing, I guarantee, I can teach a dynamite Bible study, I can preach a dynamite sermon on Sunday morning, and I turn that road and the first person cuts me off, I need to come back and have some Jesus. Because I done said some things to that, to that person, and give them a couple fingers that I, not, not, that are not nice, he was getting, I didn't give him a thumbs up. I didn't give him a thumbs up, you know what I'm saying? But that's, but, but that's me trying to be real with you one hundred percent of the time. There are some persons that are afraid if you see the realness in them, you won't look at them with respect. You, you are down on them, and, and what I cannot get some people to understand, persons that are looking for God are more likely to respect you in your realness than not. Give me an example, kids. We tend to, or not we, my, my parents tend to be like, tend to talk, talk from the perspective, don't do what I do, do what I say. And my parents acted like they were never teenagers. Like they never had friends that were pressuring them to do anything, that they never were in situations where they had to decide between, they, if you listen to my parents, they always made the right decision. And I know that's not right, because my, my mom is the youngest child, and her older brother, sister said, your mother was bad as she can be. She was, she, she, she was a hellion on, on, on two wheels. Uh, that, that's their description of their little sister. And so what happened, it, it made, at least growing up, me think my parents were not authentic. I learned later, they are, they were just concerned with projecting that they did the wrong thing. But the one thing I tell them now, I said, if you had taken the time to just talk, there would have been no danger. So now I, I have a fifteen year old, okay? She came to me one day, she said, Daddy, I absolutely don't wanna have any bodies on me. Now, I'm a criminal defense attorney, got trained, so I'm like, I'm killing people in high school, what's going on? When I hear bodies, I'm thinking dead bodies. She said, no Daddy, I don't want to have sets before a certain time. I said, that's what you're calling it? Bodies? She said, yes. And, 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 and she says, some of my friends, their body counts are high. She's a freshman in high school. And, 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 and so, now I could have done it like my parents. Don't, don't you do this, don't you do that, and go to your room. I had to say, I said, babe, baby, let me be honest with you. Daddy's in high school, he had a few bodies himself. I said, but let me tell you something, now that Daddy knows what he knows, I will go back and give them bodies back. I would have waited. I'd say, you have something so precious and valuable, that I, no one taught me it was valuable, growing up. And I said, so you should hold that. And so what happens, because of that, and because we had a conversation where we were real like that, and I let them know, I let, I let, my five year old started to learn that. Daddy, you made a mistake? She said, yes. It makes them wanna come back to me and say, Daddy, you're not gonna believe that I made another mistake. And we told them, but when you come across the hypocrite, what happens, when I do need something, I don't wanna come to you. Because I know you're not gonna, I'm gonna find someone else. And here's the thing, I, you have to be careful about that, because if they think that we're hypocrites in the church, then they're gonna turn to people who don't have God at the center of their life, and they're gonna tell them to do it in, in a way that's unGodly. Eh, go ahead, Doc.
No, you're good.
Good, so, so I, it's something that we, we are wrestling with every day. And, 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 and in fact, the one reason why we're doing this right now, is because I'm trying to teach that doing ministry does not require parting the Red Sea. It does not, it, it does not require resurrecting people from the dead. That in fact, there was a sermon we had received about multiplying through division. Today was a good example. We had these packets of food that were individually wrapped, they were large packets. Now, if we gave the, the entire packet away, we probably only be able to feed eight families. But when we broke the, the packets into individual parts, we were able to multiply. But we had to divide first to multiply. And, 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 right, right, and so, this hopefully is showing us, uh, in fact, one person asked, he said, and she said, are you concerned that there are not many people here helping you? I said, a little bit. I said, but here's the thing, no one has modeled for us what this looks like. And so right now, because no one has modeled, there's no path. Does this look like a dark scar? I, I said, right now, I'm the comet blazing the path. And if, and if God lets me blaze it right, now we have a model to follow. And then next time we do it, someone will come out because they see it works. And here's the funny thing, I know it's gonna work, because when I first mentioned doing this, the amount of opposition I got. You can't do this, you gotta take it to this, I'm like, this is a commandment of God, this is what Jesus said. And here's the thing, we, I never thought we would have, you said there is something, I've counted forty-two boxes. I never thought we'd have forty-two boxes, meaning there's a chance for us to bless forty-two families on Saturday morning. And I never thought we'd have that many, I kept saying maybe twenty, twenty-five, I didn't know that we had that much food in that pantry. And my hope is prayer, is that we have forty-three families come. Forty-three families. So, and here's the funny thing, I've got folks saying, I'll see you Saturday, and I know they're coming to see if this is gonna work. And it is, so I, so I, so I, so I, you know, I wanna have the.
That's, that's a part of it.
Air tree.
Yeah, like why?
But, but here's the thing, let me just say, everyone's seeking. Your whole life is God's stage to show someone that what they believe about you and him is absolutely wrong. Your whole life, think about this, think about the last time you said you wanted to do something large, and people said, you can't do that. You won't be able to do that. And unfortunately, you know what some of us did? We've listened to and said, yeah, I can't do it. Spe, 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 but, but here's the thing.
I say that because, you know, I'm in a very, very tough technical high school.
Amen.
In New Haven.
Okay.
And, you know, you talk about your daughter, you know, well, we have freshmen and sophomores that are moms.
Right.
They're out on a six week maternity.
Right.
In school.
Right.
We have kids that have Jonathan. One foot, one world.
And other foot, even other world.
And it'll be, uh, four years, it's December, where he was shot and killed at the age of nineteen. So when I have something in my head.
You go for it.
Not for me.
But for your kids.
And not for the glorification.
But for the right thing to do.
Because these kids need, which is, which is what you would hope.
We will all do, but, but, but the reality is, is, is not. Let's be for real, Jesus came to be a blessing, and the ones that should have been right there with him should not have been the disciple, it should have been the Pharisees. They had the scripture with them, they memorized scripture, when Jesus was sitting here multiplying food, they should have gone to, they should have literally gone to scripture, where God said, I will pour you out man of heaven. When God, when, when Jesus has resurrected Jairus' daughter, the woman for Naam's, uh, son, and all these people that are dead, they should have instantly gone to Elijah being in the widow's house, and Elijah fall, Elijah, uh, resurrecting the widow, and then Elisha resurrecting another, uh, couple's son. They should have remembered that. When, when, here's the thing, remember when Jesus says, before he resurrects, before Elijah says, God, thank you for hearing me, I know you always hear me. I said this for the people, you know what he's doing? He's imitating Elijah, because of poor Elijah did sacrifice on Mount Carmel, he says the same thing. God, thank you for doing this, you, you, you did this to let them know that you sent me, this is your will. He's repeating that. Everything, J, J, when Jesus does a sermon, you know what the purpose of Sermon on the Mountain is? It's the regiving of the regiving and reissue of the law. Jesus as both God, law giver and prophet sits, he goes and sits on a mountain, check this out. So gotta, so I wanna go history. Matthew's Gospel is written to Jewish Christians, it's a Jewish community, they've lost their temple, the temple has been destroyed. Every Jew, even the Jewish Christians are saying, where do we find God now that his temple is destroyed? Matthew wants them to understand God has shifted from a temple to a person. And so when Jesus gets on, in chapter five, when Matthew gets on the mountain, he's re, he's reenacting the Exodus story. So he's playing both the role of Moses and God. So you, his going up on the mountain, is Moses going to get the law? His sitting on the mountain, talking down into the valley, is God giving the law? And what he's doing, he's reoriented the law, he's representing the law for present time. You've gotta, gotta remember, it's been thousands of years since Moses, so just like we're looking at now, thousands of years since Jesus. He's re-giving the law in a way that fits the present context. And, so I, 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 but, but I'm saying that to you, everything Jesus did was to show persons what God can do. And, and think about this, when the, when the quadriplegic, you know, the four friends that brought through the roof? If we brought through the, brought through the roof? But amen, that when God brought, when they brought down through the roof, Jesus, cause I say this all the time, I would be mad as fish grease if I did all this work of carrying my friend across town, digging up, messing up someone's roof, and the first thing that God says to me is, your sins are forgiven. I want God to make my friend walk. But here's the thing, the Pharisees were over saying, who is he to, to say his sins are forgiven? Jesus, amen, what's that about, we've been talking about this. Jesus says, to show you that I have power to forgive sins, I'm gonna exercise another equally godly power, enabling persons, crippled persons, quadriplegics, meaning from here down, can't move. Get up, pick up your mat, go home, and the man did it. Your life, my life, is to show people what God can do. You think God has made it so he can buy some of this food and the food go bad? I, I, I bet you right now, there are people that are looking at that sign like, I don't believe they're really gonna get the food out. And I don't believe they're gonna have enough. I, some, some of the things I've gone through, I would not wish on another person, would wish on my enemy. But then I realized, when God shows me what people, how people responded to, I went through a situation where a fellow lawyer told his wife that if it had been him, he would have put a gun in his head and blown the back of his head off. But he said, if Al could go through it, I know I could deal with my stuff. And the whole time I'm sitting, God, why do you have me going through this, this is so unfair. I, I, I preach, I teach, I work, I don't do anything but try to serve you, and God says, it's not about you. It's about using you for someone else, but it ain't about you. This is why Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego didn't defend themselves. They said, oh king, may you live forever, hear us. The God we serve is worthy of praise and worship. We know he can do anything, we know he can even protect us from your fiery furnace, but this is, this is the, the faith in it. But if he doesn't, we're still not gonna praise you, we're still not gonna bow down and worship you. Our Lordy. Now here's the thing, it sounds good. It sounds really good, until he said, to Nebuchadnezzar says, heat up the furnace. Turned up to the top, in fact, we were talking about it earlier, this is how hot the furnace is, that the men that were going to put them in the furnace instantly could, instantly combust. They weren't in the furnace, this getting close enough to the heat caused them to catch a fire. Meshach, Shadrach, and Abednego still didn't catch on fire. Now here's the thing, if I'm on fire and I touch you, you will be on fire. That's just the reality of it, because we're flammable, our clothes are flammable, but they didn't catch a fire. They didn't instantly combust, they end up going into the flames. They did not get a first degree burn, a second degree burn, a third degree burn, their hair wasn't burned off, their clothes weren't stained, the word said it even smelled like smoke. I'm getting ready to have family down this weekend, and I'm burning, firing up that grill, you don't wanna be around me, God will smell like a charcoal, a bag of charcoal. Cause I will be in my element, in fact, I'm the kind of person, I'll run you with, swatting you with the, uh, spatula, the grill spatula, get away from my grill. It, it's, it's hard to be in smoke. They, and here's the thing, they were in there, at some point, if the heat was so hot to burn up people, it burned off their shackles. It burned off that which kept them shackled. Human nature is when we're in troubles, to get out of trouble. They were able to resist human nature, to stay in the furnace. We don't hear them saying, hey God, we got the point, you can let us out now. They stay, we don't know how long they were in the furnace before Nebuchadnezzar got down. And my, and my inclination is, they were in there for a while. Because Neb, you know what Nebuchadnezzar's listening for?
Screaming and hollering.
Ah, we're sorry, get us out of here. And no, and no one's hollering, and so he's like, okay. Uh, they, they, they are hollering. So maybe, and so here's another thing, maybe they died. So you know what Nebuchadnezzar does? He sits on the grill, and they're like, uh, King, you're not gonna believe this. And that's when Nebuchadnezzar gets off and comes down, he says, how many do we throw in there?
Three.
There's a fourth one that's like the son of God. But the whole point is, Meshach, Shadrach, and Abednego understood that in that moment, it wasn't about, that they didn't even try to defend themselves. It was about Nebuchadnezzar, and those who believed Nebuchadnezzar was the final savior. And so they understood. Let me do you one better, okay, so their thing moved real quick. Daniel's didn't. Daniel saw it coming. He saw his enemies creating this law, he saw the law enacted. Daniel still went home and prayed three times to his God, and he made sure the window was open so that you could hear him. Daniel knew what the consequence was. There, in fact, Darius was so, so he loved Daniel so much, cause he was so impressed with him, he made Daniel number two. That's the Joseph story, he made Daniel number two in all the land. He didn't want to do it, but because he had issued law, he could not contradict his law. As the word says it, Darius could not sleep that whole night. That, that, that's a word for someone, that here's someone's oppressing you, you so worried about God getting in the back, do you know God has made it so they can't sleep because they know they should not have been oppressing you? Daniel goes in there, he stays in there, trusting God, he didn't know what God was gonna do. But God did, and God showed up, and God kept the lines of the shut, so that when Darius gets up and runs in next morning, he beats on the boulder. Uh, uh, Daniel, I hope the God you serve protects you. Daniel says, oh king, live forever, my God was faithful to me. And he kept him, and guess what? Daniel speaks about God. Darius and Nebuchadnezzar basically have the same response. I now know that there's no God other than your God, and let those people who speak bad about your God be killed. In fact, for the, for the Daniel folk, everyone in that plot against Daniel, them, their families, their servants, their livestock, their entire household were thrown into the lions' den. And instantly they said the lions pounced on them. Instantly. And so I, so I say all this to you love, just say, you're.
My head is gonna crack.
I, 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 I'm saying all this to you love to say, you, you are serving a purpose, even if you're doing nothing but just living your life, doing the best you can to love all those babies at that school, and give them the best guidance they can, you may not know it. In fact, what happened, you may be ninety-nine years old, can't hear, can't see, and everyone's saying, hitting one of your students, you're like, I don't know who that is. And the student's like, I just wanna come by and say, thank you for loving me the way you did. In fact, what may happen, you may, you may be dead and gone, and someone will say, you know what? She loved me, my mama didn't love me, my daddy didn't love me, no one took the time to tell me, this is how it is, and guess what? God be praised, because you were the willing vessel. Just like you know right now, I, I, I almost don't wanna talk to him half the time. Because at one point, he shared at all times, at, 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 uh, uh, one of our church, our church anniversaries, cause we, from pastor, I pastor at another church. He broke me down, he said, I got it there, but you're more of a father to me than he is. It, it breaks you down, because he, the thing is, all you're doing is just trying to do the right thing and give them what they need, but God lets them see you in a light, and here's a funny thing, God said to me, he ain't gonna be. But God lets them see you in a light, and here's a funny thing, God said to me, he ain't gonna be the last one. He ain't gonna be the last one. God even said, you have folks that are gonna be older than you and gonna call you dead. And, and again, I'm like, God, that's a lot of responsibility. You know what I'm saying, I just, I just, I just wanna get to my hot dog and hamburgers on the grill, that's all I want. I didn't, I just wanna go sit in the pool in the corner with my Diet Pepsi and just sit in the pool. But God says, but you're, you're here to serve me. And again, the word says, when one gives God the credit, heaven rejoices. Do, do you know heaven is rejoicing? Because not only did you give the credit, but you're willing to let him use you? And I know sometimes you don't know how you're gonna do it, you don't know where you're gonna get the resources from, you don't know who's gonna help you. You don't even know how it's gonna be received. In fact, the last time you tried to do it, everyone had a reason why you shouldn't do it. But here it is, you feel that, that nagging something saying, get your behind in there and do it. Someone's life has changed, you wanna even know it. Amen. I've got me and him preaching.
I gotta go.
But that's, I gotta go.
Amen, praise God.
The mark of a good shepherd is not the size of your flock, but the size of your message.
Amen, praise God.
You are a great messenger.
And you, you have blessed us here tonight, you have.
I gotta go.
Amen, so let, let me ask, are there any prayer concerns we wanna lift up tonight? Amen, amen, uh, I know you have your usual suspects. Uh, Deacon Demille asks us to pray for his son that was in an accident. Uh, they were worried, because he had to go to the hospital, he's home now, for God has shared with Deacon Demille. We can get another car. And here's the thing, especially if the angel of death came wanting the price to be paid. Praise God that the only, the only price that he will allow be paid was the destruction of the car and not the loss of a life. You know, many times, we, we are focused on the loss of something and not the preservation of the life. Cause here, then we get another car, even if it was a Bentley, you can get another Bentley. You know, but we cannot get another.
Well, and that's what we, why we were late.
Amen.
Was because there was a major crash.
Yeah.
And the first thing we said is, we were, you know, we just hoped that everybody was,
Amen, in, in, in fact, when I, when I see, when I see an accident, I always say, God, please protect them and keep them. And here, and that's why we're saying, what if the person you're praying for is a skinhead, a Nazi skinhead? Keep him. Because we don't know when the day comes when God's gonna meet them where they are and transform them. You don't know that. Paul was a Nazi skinhead to every first-century Christian. His name was Saul. In fact, imagine this when Ananias, uh, I think it was, I think his name was Ananias. But he's in seventy-eight, and he brought Paul before the, 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 the apostles. And he, and his, his, he started off with, honored fathers, honored leaders. I'm here to recommend the inclusion of Saul within the body of Christ. You, you know, as soon as he saw him and everyone pulled out their secret guns, and that was, cause they were waiting for Paul to say the wrong thing. But what happened, God blessed Saul so much that when he opened his mouth, they could hear the spirit of God on, on, upon him. And after he spoke to them, there was unanimous consent and agreement that he is now a believer. And he should be accepted with open arms. Some, I hate to say it, because I'm so mad at him right now, but the number after forty-four to four forty-six. The day could come, the, 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 the day could come when he really meets Jesus and does a one hundred and eighty-degree change. And when he does, what are we gonna say?
We were wrong.
We, no, not, not, not that we were wrong, and not that we were wrong, but came up, but, but do we have the ability to forgive like God does?
Well, that's our prayer.
That's a prayer. That, that is a tall order. That is a tall order, that is a tall order. Uh, 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 I could be here for the rest of the night, but that is a tall order. But, but again, I say all that same, when I drive out, I'm like, God, please protect them regardless of where they are. Because they're someone's family member, they're someone's husband, someone's wife, someone's brother, someone's sister, someone's uncle, someone's aunt, someone's niece, someone's nephew, someone's grandma, someone's grandfather. And even if they don't believe, they mean something to someone. And we don't want to see them be harmed. Uh, amen, any other, any other, uh, request? Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm, we, we gonna get a bucket of oil for you, God, I gotta dip you in oil before you leave. But you, I gotta watch him, make sure he's alright, covered, covered by the blood before he leaves. Amen, 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 praise God. Let's do this, let's go ahead and have our closing word of prayer. Dear Father God, Creator that heavens and the earth, God, thank you for tonight, God. We know we went a little long, God, but we were in your presence, God. What needed to be said was said. Father God, we oughta praise you right now for just showing up and being a pre- very present part of this Bible study. That God, as we were sharing, as we were interacting, someone heard your clarion call, your clarion explanation, your clarion commandment. And God, it spoke to our spirits, and it reminded us, God, that we do not belong to ourselves. We belong to you, and you have final authority, final say-so over us, Father God. And because you do, God, we live our lives submitted to you. Now, Father God, the truth is, many times when we go through it, it leaves us scratching our heads. It makes us ask the question, why must I endure this? Why must I experience this? Why must I go through this? And what we learn, God, is that we're going through it for a purpose, your purpose. And God, you're using us to show somebody else what faith looks like, show somebody else what belief looks like, show somebody else what trust looks like. And Father God, as you use us, help us understand you have never left us nor forsaken us. That's why the fire hasn't burned us. That's why the trap hasn't worked on us. That's why the lions haven't eaten us up. It ain't because they're not there, it's because, God, you kept their mouths closed. And that, God, you are doing something. So, Father God, help us to take our focus off of us and put our focus on others, to help others be, other become who you want them to become. Other servant leaders. Father God, we pray right now on Wednesday for Saturday morning that, God, you will have families lined up on that sidewalk. To receive, God, uh, this food, God, to receive, God, this, this act of ministry, this act of love, God. So that, God, they may know that you not only sit, I look low, but you, God, you actually hear prayers, and yet you're working them out. God, let them, let this, this food be a taste of all that you have for them, God. And God, help us to be, become better ministers. Now, God, we're gonna leave this place, but God, we pray never from your presence. We pray, God, that you watch over, protect us, keep us, and, and lead us, so that, God, we may be protected to your eternal Son. To, to worship you and love on you, you gotta get what you do. Father God, we love you, we thank you, we send your sons mighty matches, marvelous, magnificent, we do praise. Amen. Amen, amen, amen. Let me turn off the, the camera, see, amen, amen, God, amen, amen, uh. I'm knocking them over.
Overtime, huh?
I, I, I know, I, I, I know, a- a- amen, amen, amen.